Okay, everyone. Greetings for those of you that are here. Our room is full to capacity tonight. The system is not working like we want it to work. Of course, it's in these trial runs. So there will be a recording. So everybody would like to speak in the mics, especially those who come to the podium. And this posting will be up tomorrow from the meeting tonight. So now that we've got everybody here, we welcome everybody to our first meeting in October. And we'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation by Reverend Sherman Davis. Please remain standing. Please place your beliefs.
What we're saying and praising is one another great day today. We thank you goodness, you kindness, you mercy, Lord. We thank what needed and directed and all things are done here this afternoon in this town hall meeting. That your spirit will lead you to direct in all things. Keep everybody safe when they go home. But most of all, we give you thanks. We give you honor. We keep you glory for all things. And then just with you pray. Amen?
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under item number one, approval of the agenda. Do we have additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add an item under presentations for a resolution and possible board action. I'd also ask that item be item A and move the following items down.
Okay. Commissioner Marley is going to add under presentations. That's item three on the agenda. The addition is board action?
Presentation.
A resolution for possible board action. Here's a motion. Commissioner Lake, second. All in favor?
One.
Okay. Seeing none opposed. That's added. Any other additions or deletions? Mr. Shaw?
I would like to add under item G, under presentations, VAC discussion.
Okay. We have a motion to add Veterans Affairs Committee discussion. We have second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed. That will be added to the agenda. Do we have any further additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, no.
I am so sorry. We are deleting the original item, item B, employees' recognition off of the agenda. And we are also deleting the closed session. We no longer we have a closed session. Thank you.
So we have a motion that we're deleting. It was item B, employee recognition for Harry Miller coming home twenty years of public work. And we are removing the closed session to the end of the agenda. Second. Second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed. Those deletions. So finally, do we have any further additions or deletions to the agenda?
May I make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions?
Okay. Have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions. We have a second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed. Motion carries. Managers report and under official comments. We'll start off with our town manager. He is reporting under tab one.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. The October sixth managers report. First page includes the Old Mill Day celebration. It will take place October twenty fifth here at Minister Park from eleven a.m. to five p.m. Registration for vendors and food trucks are still open. Elevate Hope Mills Phase Three, the Business Accelerator Program, begins this Wednesday, October eighth. It's designed for entrepreneurs who are ready to move into sustainable growth. This phase will run for four weeks with a cohort-based session covering strategic planning, financial infrastructure readiness, sales and marketing alignment, operational compliance and other things. It will conclude with a one-day business brunch that will include a roundtable with the North Carolina Secretary of State Elaine Marshall. She has actually come on board officially for this program. She has a small business accelerator program statewide. Today and also with Elevate Hope Mills, they begin this Wednesday, six to eight thirty at the John W. Hodges Safety Center next door. Two and a half hours each week for a full period. We had our first steering committee for the Hope Mills Area Land Use Plan today. Very powerful land use plan, but we need the input of our citizens to move forward with this long-term plan. Community feedback plays a vital role in the completion of the land use recommendations. And we'll have our kickoff meeting on October twenty eighth from noon to seven at Parks and Recreation Building next door at fifty-seven sixty-six Rockfish Road. A lot of times you hear a lot of information and feedback from the community about controlling the growth and making sure we actually keep the small-town character of what it makes Hope Mills what it is. But we cannot do that without your input. And so the steering committee, which includes most of our economic development committee and several other citizens, developers and stakeholders. Our first steering committee was today to help guide how we're going to roll this out. But we're asking for your support. They do have a website. It's up and running right now. It provides information on land use planning, Hope Mills area land use plan, upcoming events. And a survey will be live on the website in a few days. Second page of the community corner includes our fall little sweep photographs. We had Mayor and Commissioner Scorola attacking the hill at Hope Mills Road in Camden with the Auburning Zs. We had about sixty volunteers that come out townwide to help us in our beautification efforts in the town. Hope Mills Police Department here in their monthly coffee with a cop at Company Coffee Roasters. That's a community policing program. It's very powerful. In addition to walk with a cop and breakfast with baddies. They had their event earlier this month. Public Safety Day will be October eleventh from ten a.m. to two p.m. It's a partnership with Lowe's. We're joining us. Highlights include inflatable fire safety houses, food trucks, law enforcement, EMS and fire department. We are still accepting applications for firefighters. We're looking for certified firefighters. We're offering a pretty amazing benefits package. We're also offering hiring traffic control officers for our SRO program. A lot of people may not know we're the only municipality in Compton County that's fully staffed. Our schools with SROs. Your TCOs or traffic control officers are the ones that actually direct traffic. So we are still hiring for those. In terms of Parks and Recreation, some involve events. We have a Fall Social October eighteenth at Hope Mills Lake. Our annual trunk-a-tree. It's probably our biggest event of the year. It's about three thousand people. It'll be October twenty fourth next door partnering again with Rockfish Elementary. It's for five thirty to seven thirty, but I would advise you to get there about four thirty if you do not want to be at the back of the line. Our Thanksgiving luncheon for fifty-five and up. This is our senior citizens program. It's November twenty-first. We have another really cool program called Fifty-Five Strong. It's a fitness event for the elderly. In terms of Chamber of Commerce, the business breakfast is every fourth Tuesday of the month at all the old mills. We actually have a chili cook-off that we're helping them to sponsor this Saturday, November eighth, from twelve to four at Dirtbag Hells. They are still accepting vendors and anybody that feels that their chili recipe is better than mine. Be on board and come on and register. Last two pages of the managers report will remain active updates on the significant amount of NCDOT projects that are taking place. We do have updates on the one right here at Town Hall Complex, which is golfing at Rockfish Road. Many people don't realize they're widening both of these roads to two lanes each side with meetings, roundabouts at the intersection here and in front of Park Garden Court, Park Boulevard. And we're coordinating with NCDOT to put sculptures in those roundabouts as well. I think this project is at thirteen percent completion, which doesn't sound sexy to you guys, but that's pretty significant progress to us. And this is a two-year project, but that does conclude the managers report for our October sixth meeting. Well, wait a minute. I got three more things. A candidate's forum is scheduled this Saturday, October eleventh at the Hope Mills Parks Recreation Facility, eleven a.m. This forum is not facilitated by the town, but it will give citizens and voters an opportunity to directly engage candidates seeking election in Hope Mills. A T-Mobile grant. I'll give this one, these schools, to Mayor Lieutenant Dr. McCray. T-Mobile grant has been submitted by Mr. Bryan for a total of thirty-four thousand dollars to secure funding for a massive mural to be erected along the side of the Parks and Recreation Facility. If we can pull this off, you guys get a chance to see it. It is pretty amazing. And the biggest part is that this grant does not have a match requirement. It is fully funded. That's the way that we're approaching getting things done in town without touching your tax dollars. And finally, Viewpoint Across America. The video is ready. Many people may not know about maybe eight months ago, Mayor and I got a call from an organization that is actually the face of is actor Dennis Quaid. And they do a lot of highlights on towns across America. And they chose Hope Mills. And they came in and did a series of videos and filming. And it will premiere next week during primetime hours from six p.m. to ten on Fox News Business. Some of the other affiliate stations are CNN, ABC, NBC, things of that nature. But we will know the exact date, probably by the end of the week. And we will upload this video to our website as well. But this is a tool that we will use to attract new businesses, industries and residents to our town. Like I said before, while ensuring that we remain focused on the small-town character. But the video is amazing. It does highlight things in Hope Mills that would let you know exactly what type of developments we're doing from residential to industrial, commercial, the things of that nature. So that does conclude the managers report for this meeting. I think that goes to the best.
Thank you, sir. It gets longer and longer every meeting. Started off with a couple pages. Now we're almost ten. And it will continue because there's something to do every day and weekend in Hope Mills. Something, somewhere to go and something to do. Some event will be planned. Board comments. I'm going to start with Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see packed audience. Just a quick note. Tomorrow, the voting is only for the Fayetteville primary. So don't go, you know, try to vote for Hope Mills. That's not until the general election is November fourth. Our early voting starts October sixteenth.
October sixteenth.
October sixteenth. So no one from Hope Mills go to try to vote tomorrow. That's what the town manager said, the chili cook-off. So I want to try some different chilies. I may submit my own. But to give you a little advice, write this down if you're going to submit. Make it a little different. Don't just say it's my family's recipe. Make it with rabbit, deer meat, something different. All different. Hey, one of the ones that won one year had deer meat in it. And then the one that won first place last year was a vegan chili. So you got the original. You can't just say it's my family recipe and it's just basic. Just give me a little advice if you want some of it. But yes, contact the Chamber of Commerce if you want to submit an entry for the chili.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to welcome everybody here tonight. Also, I'd like to welcome my new police officers here this morning.
You.
Welcome. And also want to give a shout-out, if you will, to our police chief, Dalton. To him and his staff. I tend to be open house this afternoon. It's very thorough and great tool. Thanks, Chief. And I thank you for what your staff are doing with the community involvement and transparency in Hope Mills.
Commissioner Lake?
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see everyone here this evening. When I got here, I thought you were waiting on me to get here. I don't have any serious things to talk about tonight. So I'll pass the ball to someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gray?
Excuse me, because I can hardly talk. I've had some throat surgery. But it is good to see a good crowd here tonight. And I'd like to thank Greeley Mitchell. If you didn't go to the gospel singing Saturday night at the Hope Mills Church of God, you really missed a wonderful meeting. And it was sponsored by the Arms House. And I think you did quite well, didn't you, Greeley?
Yes, Mayor.
I said, didn't you do it quite well, the Arms House, with your donations and all that?
Yes, you did.
And it was so wonderful. I got to see a former cousin of mine, Russell Layder, was there singing. And I say former, he was first married to my first cousin. And we laugh about that when I say he's my former first cousin. But anyway, I thoroughly enjoyed it. And the next time that you have one, maybe could you fill that all that up for you? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Porchem, I'd like you to pray.
I just would like to say it's good to see you all. It's good to be seen. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Before I get too far in my comments, I wanted to highlight something since we have such a cool house tonight. A highlight that we had at our last meeting at six o'clock, which we recognized the public service of former Mayor Jackie Warner and her family. If you notice on the back wall, a lot of folks don't, when they come in, they don't see all the former mayor pictures that are on the back wall. But the top row is the eighteen and nineteen hundred mayors. And the bottom row recreated this year, starting off with the longest-serving mayor of Hope Mills in that is Edmond Deaver, followed by Eddie Dees. And now Jackie Warner's picture is up on the wall. And I just wanted to highlight that all the former mayor pictures will go up there. And we've got another row starting for the next bunch of mayors that will go up. Something personal for me is I look at that wall every night. I sit in one of these meetings and I try to draw inspiration. Every one of those mayors has sat in this chair. And I'm honored to do that. I wasn't going to talk about something, but it bothers me when people go on social media and they just tell stuff that's just like untrue. I don't know the motivation of why. It's just stuff that they go on and they say. It even bothers me even more when one of them is saying it. This candidate for Hope Mills Commission. There's been a bunch of public records requests. There's probably up to about forty of them now from various people across town that are sending in public records requests that are inundating our staff every day with documents. On August thirteenth, we had a surprise visit from the state auditor. No notice. The auditor showed up on August thirteenth and said, "Well, we've got some complaints and anybody can submit those." And they have to come and they have to investigate. And we want them to because we have nothing, nothing at all to hide. We have had clean audits for years. We've had accounting awards for years. And if anybody wants any public records, all they have to do is send in a request and we will deliver. Now, we came to it in one day, depending on what it is. But the auditors came. Our finance director, Rudy Martin, who has received these accounting awards and his staff for outstanding awards year after year after year after year. To include our own audits. Staff provided these documents. Along with town managers, auditors left. They didn't have any findings at that point. We were going to announce that, but we were kind of waiting on some reports, some findings, so we could share with the public. So it's not like we're not being transparent. We are. But we didn't get a final report. Then we had another meeting by Zoom that asked more pointed questions. And here we are today. On Monday, October sixth. Our finance department came here today to do their normal job. And they were met with state auditors with more questions about the town's finances today. So that compels me now to address it tonight. We have nothing to hide. We provided every document. We answered every question. There was not a problem at all. But they have to do their job. But when people go on social media and they make up just flat untruth and lies about expenses that has occurred in this town, for example, and I will read one directly from a social media site. While in Florida, even though they rented a vehicle, the town manager used an Uber on several occasions. And one of those trips was to a rooftop lounge in Florida. That is a flat lie. It is. I was in Florida. And I know he didn't get in an Uber and go to a rooftop lounge. And Chance, if you'd like to say something about it, you can. There are a few other things in this, too.
I didn't think Uber started including the locations of where they pick you up at your seats. Typically, you do a pin drop at the intersection that you're at. But before the meeting, I had to went through all of the Uber seats. Says ten a.m. at one seventeen West Avenue in Tampa. But I think what's important is we spoke about people who are wanting for elections. And I need the voters to understand that you need to know who you're voting for. Because there are people seeking an election that may not have a basic level of understanding about government works.
Amen.
If you're in this room and you work for government, I'll give you a promise, and for per day. We're talking about travel. The state sets the seventy cents per mile rate. Everybody's not there yet because we all do this. The finance department calculates the distance and mileage to and from, calculating them out. Then it gets tricky with the food. You know, I think it's five dollars a breakfast or certain amount for lunch and dinner. If you're traveling the travel day, you may only get dinner. You get breakfast, lunch and dinner for three days before they get down there. And then the travel day back, you might get breakfast. We have people asking us for the gas receipts and the food receipts from a year ago. And what happens is after we explain to them that that's not how government works, the auditors show up and ask for the same thing. And so I want people to understand, you see this stuff in the paper. We have had clean audits for the last six years in a row. And to include the current audit that we had in 2024. We've gotten the CAFRA award, which is what you said, Certificate of Achievement and Financial Reporting, for six years in a row. And so, but I think there's this narrative that we're doing something nefarious. And to include what you just read, the person thought that we should have driven town vehicles to Florida. Well, if you do the math, it was cheaper for the marketing and Dr. McCray not to fly because it was almost double the cost to the town for mileage to Florida. But let's dig a little deeper. What cars are we driving? This is not a municipality that has a fleet of vehicles that we can just sign out. So what department were we supposed to cripple to take their vehicles to Florida for five days? But if you don't understand how government works and you're just a citizen reading this stuff, it sounds like way nearby on Flat Street TV. And it's not happening. And so I thank you for the opportunity to address that because a lot of people call me, "Hey, what are you doing down there? Why are y'all being investigators?" If you call the state investigators on this and say, because today, I'm going to let everybody know what they're asking about. The Cotton Tail Trail. That's what the state auditor's asking us about today. That's the trunk-a-tree for Easter. Dr. McCray's Prime Movers group had a tiaras and ta-tas event. It was a daddy, daughter and brother's son event. That got called to the state auditor. Our vinegar cutting for Harriet's Park, it got rained out. I think they called in Commissioner Scorola's fishing derby. And so if you look at some of these municipalities, they have thirty million dollar short forms and things of that nature. That's not happening here. I will tell you, I think you got people getting frustrated because they're sitting there and they've gone off with their own correction request and they don't like that nothing was being filed because there's nothing going on. And so I thank you for the opportunity to address that.
Thank you, Chance. And to clear the record, one of the questions the auditors asked on August thirteenth was they came here because someone called and said a bunch of elected officials and staff went on vacation in Tampa, Florida. Am I wrong? That's exactly what you said.
They asked us about the Tampa Trail. And I said, "Are you talking about the National League of Cities National Conference of Municipalities in the United States?" And so we know when we read it. But I need the voters to understand there are elected officials across the United States. When I just read to you the thirty-four thousand dollar no-matching grants that we just submitted, it's through a grant program that we have yielded almost six million dollars in grant funding. Where did we find out about the program? At one of the conferences. So we try to explain to people the information we're bringing back that we can actually implement here to eliminate the utilization of your tax dollars. This is not a vacation. It was a national conference that everyone owes to. And these are some of the things they were bringing up.
Everybody goes there to do exactly what I did. Every day I was there and I was begging for money for this municipality for the services. That's what I went there for and that's what everybody else does do. If you don't go, you don't show up, you don't get it. So we weren't on some vacation, on some party boat, at some rooftop lounge. We were not doing any of that. And I just feel humbled tonight, just to clear the record. I get tired of hearing about it and reading it on social media. If someone who ever makes this is not in this room, I wish they were here so that we could address it and just say, "Look, why do you post up like this when you know it's not true?"
Because I should get to show up, man.
Okay. We'll move on. Our steering committee, like Chance said earlier, meant today the future of our community is here now in the Hope Mills Land Use Plan. It truly is. All of our stakeholders. And we're going to divide up Hope Mills in three different areas. And we're going to have area meetings as soon as we get past the community survey piece. The future and what land The future and what land uses in this community going forward. And I'm sure that former Commissioner Pat Edwards, who's sitting right here, knows exactly what I'm talking about with, with the land use plan, along with former Commissioner really Mitchell is sitting here. And I meant to shout out also at our school board rep, Dr. Tara Jordan is with us. Yes? But that process doesn't start with this board, it doesn't start with that section, it starts with everybody in this community. All eighteen thousand five hundred that call Hope Mills home. The future of our community and what's used on that land is the community input. And you're going to be seeing a lot of postcards and a lot of information that's going to start rolling out later on this month, encouraging input. One of them's going to be a nice packaged survey. Always gotta have surveys. And we're going to take all that input, crunch it all up. So the community meeting is coming up at the end of the month, is our first keynote piece. Lastly, there was an event that my wife, myself and my wife went to, S and K Farm Market down in Dickens Foot Road. You know, when you go to a place like this and there's nowhere to park, you know it's busy and crowded. Well, I'm gonna tell you, that's exactly what we found when we went down there Saturday. That whole field was full of people that went to S and K Farm Market. And I just wanted to give them a shout out for, for having that event. That's all I have, the managers report, not managers, mayor's report. So we'll move on to presentations under item A and I think Commissioner Marley has it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I would like to, I would like to make a motion that the board officially censures Commissioner Elise Craver for comments which we were informed she made in public about town staff, which I do not believe reflect the values of this board. I will read the substance of the resolution I would like to forward to the board. Resolution of censure for Elise Craver. Whereas Commissioner Elise Craver was recently overheard making inappropriate discriminatory and offensive comments concerning the town manager and other town employees, including department heads, and expressing the opinion that the town was hiring too many black employees. Whereas such remarks made by Ms. Craver are not representative of the values sought to be upheld by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners and are contrary to the principles of fairness, integrity, and racial equality that this board has committed to uphold. Whereas the Board of Commissioners elected by the citizens of this community hold these values in the highest regard, striving to create a government that is inclusive and respectful to all individuals regardless of their race, eth- ethnic, ethnicity, ethnicity, sorry, and or background. Whereas Ms. Craver's comments do not reflect the values of the town of Hope Mills or the ideals of the elected officials who are entrusted with serving our community in a fair and just manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners officially censures Commissioner Elise Craver for her comments that are inconsistent with the expectations of conduct for an elected official of the town of Hope Mills. The Board of Commissioners reaffirms its commitment to fairness, integrity, and racial equality in all its dealings with employees as well as citizens of the town. This board will continue to promote and protect the rights and dignity of every individual and will not tolerate actions or statements that undermine these values nor will we condone discrimination in any form. The citizens of Hope Mills can be assured that the Board of Commissioners stands united in its commitment to fair and equitable treatment for all and will take any necessary actions to ensure that such principles guide the town's operations and governance. Adopted this the sixth day of October twenty twenty five by the town board of Hope Mills. Um, and so my motion is for the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners to adopt this resolution of censure and I would welcome any further comments for discussion.
We have a motion to censure Commissioner Elise Craver. Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner.
Uh, thank you. I don't believe that we have enough stuff against Ms. Craver to take any action as serious as censuring her. I don't know what all was said or done, but I'm willing to sit down and talk about it. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Craver?
First of all, it's election time. This is just an election point to keep me out of office. I think everyone that knows this knows that. I have stood up for the citizens of this town. I have voted no twice on pay raises or on tax raises. I have voted for tax, uh, for pay raises for the police department and for every citizen in this town. And I have not been, the things I can tell you that have been done to me over the past two years, I am not guilty of saying any racial remark anywhere. Some of my best friends. Some of my best friends are African Americans and I will not parade them by saying that. And y'all can laugh that you don't know me. Get to know me and you know that I would never say that. But go ahead and say it, that's fine.
Commissioner Craver, any further discussion?
I'm about to say my thing and I've been, this is my, this will be my sixth year in office. I have never publicly told you all what I have been through since serving as a commissioner on this board. And I will not tonight because we're going to stick to what we are prepared to do to improve people's environment at my job twice that I know of. So we're not going to talk about what I had to sit through since I've been on this board. We're going to stick to what we're supposed to be doing tonight. So I, I do want to put that out and say that.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick handoff from the press. I too have had people inquire about my job and we were in the same place. It is insulting.
When we were starting on, do you mean the not the selfless land use plan, the, um, economic, um, maybe it might work sometime. The, no, the, um,
The D B plans?
Change of plan review, yes. Um, one of the things that we did as a group was ask if there was any, um, issues that we see in the town. And I said, there's, there's an ongoing racism issue in Dr. McCray. I remember the words you like, she didn't want to say, she's like, thank you for saying it because there is an issue and no, no one's addressing it. And the words I appear around were, uh, Commissioner Craver was, I can see there's an issue. And so to be, um, uh, I, I don't know what the word, do I read you, but there is an issue, there is an issue. And it's, it's, it's disgusting. We had this issue even while I was in the army and I was reading the newspapers back about Hope Mills and the parade issue that one time. Um, it's, it's, it's disgusting. That's all I have to say.
So, good morning. Uh, question. Further discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? All opposed? The motion will carry three to two. The censure. Next item is item B, proclamation recognized in twenty twenty five fire safety week under statute.
Mayor, Fire Prevention Week is proclaimed. Whereas every year, Fire Prevention Week is observed during the week of fire protection night in commemoration of the great Chicago fire that occurred in eighteen seventy one. This fire killed more than two hundred fifty people, that one hundred thousand homeless, destroyed more than seventeen thousand four hundred structures, and burned more than two thousand acres of land. And whereas the goal of Fire Prevention Week is to raise awareness about the dangers of fire and spread knowledge about fire safety to reduce the number of fireplace deaths and injuries. And whereas the Hope Mills Fire Department is joining the National Fire Protection Association in outreach to citizens with a message of fire safety during Fire Prevention Week twenty twenty five. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association has also designated charging the fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home as the themes for Fire Prevention Week twenty twenty five emphasizing the importance of educating the public on the safe use and handling of lithium ion batteries, company bound, and household devices. And whereas the Hope Mills Fire Department is joined by other departments of the town of Hope Mills as well as other emergency services providers and sacred advocates, businesses, schools, service clubs, and organizations in that fire safety area. Now therefore be it resolved that Jessica Alters, mayor of the town of Hope Mills, that was hereby proclaimed as the week of October fifth of the eleventh, twenty twenty five, as Fire Prevention Week for the town and encourage citizens to remember this year's charging the fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. This is the sixth day of October twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Next item is the swearing in of Police Officer Brian Laxman, officer of the Dwayne Williams.
So we have two officers that are, we're going to swear in tonight. Dwan Williams is here with his wife Sophia and his sons, Amir and Dakari. Uh, Officer Dwan Williams honorably served for four years in the U.S. Army as an IT specialist and continues to serve in Army reserves. In addition to his military service, he spent three years in law enforcement at the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. His commitment to public service reflects dedication both in uniform and in the community. And our next officer is Brian Laxman. Um, he's here to kind of visit a girlfriend, Jessica. Um, Officer Laxman also served honorably in the U.S. Army for six years and was stationed at Fort Bragg. In addition to his military service, Brian has served as firefighter in Fort Campbell and at Fort Bragg. Brian transitioned to law enforcement and served as a deputy with the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty four. This is actually a return for Brian. He was with us and moved away to Arizona and, uh, Arizona, Brian? Arizona, New York City, right? And, uh, he's back again and we're having to have him back. So quick, come up, Brian.
Okay. If you have family, come on up. If anybody wants to take pictures, come on up here too. When we do swearing hands and promotions, it's family. That's who we are in this community. That's who our staff is. This is how we, we swear in everybody, the family. So if you want to take pictures, come on up. We have a bunch of officers here to support the team. A bunch of our officers here to support them. Okay. Left hand on the button. Ready, go. I want to say aye and then each of your speakers remain. And then by your name, by your last name. Okay? Aye, say your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will be aware, that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state. And I will not be impolite in any manner on account of bias or prejudice that I will support and maintain. Constitution, the laws of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith. And that I will plead for and impartial discharge of duty in my office as a law enforcement officer, as a state position for the town of Hope Mills. Accordingly, to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment. So help me God. I always pause when I say that because you're swearing twice. Here, folk. Anybody else want to come up and get a picture, come on. Okay, next item, Eagle Scout project. We have, uh, the honor wall at the Veterans Park and Timothy, will you tell us all about it? Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Here's staff and of course the people who love this movement. Um, my name is Timmy Robson, I'm from Piscatawag, from three seven one, working seven. Uh, I come to here to talk to you all today to, uh, Eagle Scout project. What I want to do is establish and install a wall of honor in, uh, that is the wall of honor question. Um, what I hope when I'm planning on it is after, uh, when installing my new location around the wall itself, including walls, I will be working with the F W and the Heart Slander Parks Recreation Center. I can read it honestly. People perhaps may have a fifteen my dollars scout for me with saying that our Eagle project is sort of big and all this. Yeah, it's, uh, it was, yeah. Oh. This is where I want to, because my, uh, according to the F W and, uh, Heart Slander Parks, that's the best one.
Timothy, when are you going to start?
I'm thinking because my schedule, that's why the school's not that big either. Maybe we just go early, early, uh, early, similar, or, um.
When do you think you'll be finished?
that's running a whole town after hours. We have... And our crime information center was paid for with asset forfeiture funds, so at no cost to the taxpayers. Inside our crime information center, we have live cameras that can monitor intersections and traffic at intersections. Fuses cameras, that's our real-time crime centers. And what we can do is we give a core, which is a hardware that we can give to businesses and schools, and that allows us through a legal agreement to access their video surveillance cameras, not at all times, only if there's a nine-one-one call or an active violence situation. And that's important because it's producing real-time footage so our officers are responding to the scene on their laptops in their cars, so they don't have to wait to get there to develop a plan of action. So it keeps the citizens safe and our officers safe. We have access to all the video surveillance within our schools, so we can monitor any incidents that go on there, and that's for partnership with the schools. Drone and body camera, live feed footage. So our drone program, and we'll discuss that a little further next, and our body camera that our officers wear, we went the extra step to get live feed. So now when our lieutenant is sitting in a watch commander officer's office, he doesn't have to make a phone call. He's watching what our officers are doing in real time on scene and can make necessary decisions based on that information. Public can come in. We have hours open, lobby hours for fingerprints. So sometimes we have to get fingerprinted for different jobs. We can provide that service, and you could pay police reports now for four hours a day, seven days a week, as opposed to having to take time off of work to be so during the day. Our emergency service unit, this is kind of like a SWAT team, but it's a little more highly trained. These officers go through specialized training and deployment. They can do hostage rescue. We use them for all of our search warrant executions, special events security. You don't see them. They're in the background, like for our parades and for our Fourth of July events. They're like the quick reactionary tours. Unfortunately, you see things would happen in New Orleans and some of these parades throughout the country where people drive their cars through and stuff. We have officers trained to prevent that or to take immediate action if that goes unfortunately apart, especially trained... They're also going to be trained in rapid water rescue. So if they have hurricanes, those officers can deploy that to bail out. And if they have big injuries visit town, they're trained in that as well. Our canines, we now have seven canines, and it's important to emphasize here that anywhere purchased, even dogs, price of a premium dog goes anywhere from ten thousand, five hundred dollars up to seventeen thousand dollars. Every one of our dogs, we got free of charge through donations to other police departments or through other agencies or organizations. We currently have four patrol squads from paddock dogs, two bomb dogs. One is currently trained, one's in school. And we are the only town in the area close to this, Monette County, to have a bloodhound. And they are by far the best defense tractors. So we use them for Mister Lost Persons. We use them for community policing demonstrations, special events security. Our bomb dogs keep all of our playgrounds, all of the events that we have here. They're cautionary measures that we take.
Hey, Chief, what's the average age of all the hounds?
The mater, our bloodhound, he's just a puppy. He's only a few months old. He's less than a year. Salado, I think, is a year. K is five. Loki's a year or so. They're all pretty young. I think Remmy's probably our oldest. He might be six. And again, everything we do with PD, and I want to emphasize this, we do with taxpayers in mind. So we always look for alternative revenue sources. Grants, we've just got to grant to purchase their evil vest at no cost to the town or taxpayers or our officers. We utilize asset forfeiture. And what asset forfeiture is, is we are able to use proceeds obtained from criminal proceeds, drug money, stuff like that, to support our programs, and it has to go back into law enforcement programs. Since July two thousand twenty-four, and that number is a little dated now because that was a few months ago, we've probably spent purchased equipment of about a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars with asset forfeiture money at no cost to the taxpayers. So we're equipping our officers with technology and equipment.
And Chief, tonight, we have a budget amendment also tonight.
And again, it's asset forfeiture money.
Same thing.
Comstat is something we implemented about a year or so. There were two years ago. It's been on hold because we had a server issue. It's going to be back up and running December first. And what this does is every two weeks, twice a month, our supervisors have to come in. They go over our crime patterns. We go over productivity, number of arrests, number of citations, number of community events. We look to... We hold our officers accountable there, find out why productivity may be decreasing. We look for ways to do things better for the community, and we use data to replace them. So instead of just employing or deploying our resources hazardly, we look to where we're going to get the best thing for our buck. So if a neighborhood has increasing car burglaries, that's where we're going to deploy our resources. So we're putting tops on tops. We're using data and our technology to better deploy our officers. Drones, like I said, we have a pretty substantial drone program now, provides live feed back. It also has clear technology. So if we have somebody lost in the woods or a criminal outside in the woods, it can seek out heat source. So instead of having to send our officers into dangerous situations or to spend hours searching woods for lost missing persons, we can do it in a fraction of the time with our drones. Again, we do overwatch for all our event security and emergency, but for July fourth and the parades, we have drones overhead, sending real-time footage back to our officers so we can keep our community safe. We also use them for search warrant executions. So if we execute a search warrant at a home, we think somebody may be armed, instead of sending our officers in and increasing the use of us using force, we fly a drone into the home to the best dead or intel and try to get the person to come out. We're in the process of using asset forfeiture to purchase four new drones so that every patrol squad will have a drone operator on. Our medicine drop box, we just did this. This is less than a month old. Instead of doing it twice a year, our folks come to our lobby, go and bring their unwanted, expired, non-use medications, drop them off in that box, and then we make sure instead of flushing them down the toilet where we can harm the environment, we make sure we dispose of them approximately twenty-four hours a day. Our LPRs, again, these are license plate readers. These were initially paid for, again, with no taxpayer money. This was the American Arresting Plan of two thousand twenty-one. That was the initial purchase. Of course, we'll fund them through our budget and asset forfeiture going forward. But they please give us the ability to enter license plates for suspect vehicles or if there's an Alzheimer patient that goes missing, driving a car, we can put their license plate in and it sends alerts to our officers to help us alert those vehicles. They've been up and running for less than two months, and we've recovered multiple stolen vehicles already because not only do we have the twenty or so that we have in town, we share our access with other agencies than they do ours. So we have access to over thirty thousand LPRs right now across the country. Fuses, I've discussed this already, our real-time crime center. The only thing I'd like to highlight here is the private camera registration. So people that have cameras at their homes, we don't get access to their footage, but it allows them to register their cameras at that link so that if we do have an incident that occurs in their neighborhood, instead of going to do it, go to see if anybody has video footage, we can just pull up who has them, call them, ask them to check their cameras for that day or time, and then send us the footage if they would. So it saves a lot of time. Specialized training, we now are on a crime scene unit. They can do anything from a car burglar all the way out to a homicide, that they've received extensive training. All of the equipment, it was over thirty-five thousand dollars with the crime scene equipment purchased at no cost, again, used through asset forfeiture. Prices intervention, all of our officers are... A lot of our officers are training prices intervention, and that's de-escalation techniques to try to talk people down, rec management of health issues so we don't have to use force. Negotiator training. All of our... We're big on supervisor training now. Supervision is key to reducing liability. All dependents and above have to go to the West Point Leadership Program, which is a military, it's only offered in California, New Jersey, and North Carolina. It's based on the West Point leadership, you know, from the military, but geared towards law enforcement. Our second half of our department is going to be trained in, go back, in our civil disturbance training, and that helps for any protest or stuff like that. Our partners at Fayetteville are nice enough to train us in that. In crimes against children, we have a detective that's specially trained in that. And through asset forfeiture, we have brought the technology, it's called brachy. Every investigation involves a phone or a computer. Instead of having to wait for months for another agency to help us out, we can download all of that evidence off the phones ourselves now. Bikes, we just re-implemented our bike unit. We just, through asset forfeiture, again, at no cost, purchased four brand-new bikes. You'll see our officers riding around in shopping centers, at community events, during parades, especially around the holidays. Great community policing and allows us to patrol areas that vehicles, you know, are cumbersome. Our officers will be attending school in November to be trained in how to ride. It's more than just riding the bike. SROs, as you know, we started the SRO program last year. Great building of relationships with staff and students. We have a great working relationship with our partners in the school system. Our officers are mentoring students, they're attending and working all the extraterritorial events and athletic assignments. The return we're getting on that program is fantastic.
It's a model. It is a model.
And we have sixteen. Victim Advocate, we're very lucky, not... Most agencies do not. Fayetteville does, we do. We have our own victim advocate here. She's specially trained to get victims, especially with domestic violence and sexual assault, additional resources that they may not have. She gets them to get restraining orders. She explains our rights to them, she transports them to court. It's really a great that we have a sworn officer that's trained to do those things. Community policing, a few years ago, we were doing less than thirty events a year. Last year, two thousand twenty-four, a hundred and thirteen. We're on a course to break that this year. Some of them include National Night Out, Bike Rodeo, Walk for Town, Coffee for Town, Dad's and Breakfast. It gives our folks an opportunity to kind of have a coffee, have a meal with us, get to know our officers, we get to know them. Great way to build relationships. I always said, if you wait for a critical event to occur, to build relationship with the community, it's too late. You've got to do the homework now so that if something comes about, they know they're transparent and they know where to trust. Last slide, future things we hope to do as traffic increases, if you want to train some officers, not just in enforcement, but in engineering. So if we're having accidents that increase at a certain intersection, they can go out there, study the intersections, maybe the light needs to be lengthened a little bit, or maybe there's a fuel obstruction that is causing people to pull out in front of somebody else, they'll be able to do that. Expand our community policing unit. Community service work program we'd like to implement, that's people that are sentenced by the courts to do hours, you know, instead of going to jail, they may have, you know, need to ride a couple hundred hours. We'll be able to bring them here, have them walk the roads, pick up trash, clean up the cemetery. It's free labor, and they have to do it or they go to jail. Police Cadet Program, that's a basic core program that will be up and running soon. Police Youth Academy, City Police Academy, you can look for that next summer. They'll be able to come here and learn about it. And our expanding our community policing unit would help us do home and business sites. You could call up, we can send somebody out to your house and say, hey, can we reduce your chances of being burgled, trim your hedges on your ground floor level, install a light here, place a bar and sliding doors, those kind of things. So that's it.
Chief. Chief, don't go. Come back. These slides didn't happen overnight. They didn't happen in one day, one week, one month, even one year. These slides represents the dedication of your department and the solid leadership of you, your senior officers, and all the officers that work every day tirelessly in your department. We are so fortunate in this town to have not only a superb police department, but also our fire department as well. And they work in concert with each other to provide the very best services to our community every day. And that was the strength behind opening up the police station twenty-four-seven, was because we had a lot of folks in the community that wanted that. And now you're seeing the results of that and how safe our community is every day. And Chief, my hat's off to you for everything that you guys do, not only for our community, but for keeping our schools safe. Because those kids and those families and those teachers and those staff members that are in all seven of our schools know that they're safe, patrolled, and part of community policing. And that reduces crime right there with the relationships that you and your officers have built over some years in this community.
Thank you. I just want to... I mean, I... I just do the shit. I have one of the best teams. We really have one of the best agencies around, and it gets better every day because the officers I have are... They're just awesome. My team is... They're really are just best officers, you know, police officers that I've got a fortune and honor and pleasure to work with.
Any other comments or board numbers?
Chief, when you gave the one brief at Southview Baptist, it was really, really informative. I was like, you know, it was like I was in the military again. But it was really, really good in the way your officers breathe very professional, very knowledgeable of their subject matter, and it was really good.
And Chief, I would like to say, when you got here, I... We weren't... We didn't a hundred percent see eye to eye. There wasn't a lot of trust there, but you have stuck to your word in the things that you said that you were going to do, and I am very happy. And I want to say this publicly, it's one of my last four meetings here, the work that you have done has been outstanding, the reports that we did. And like I said, if you're not asking me to bring up too many first-hand issues with the technology and things that we need to do to keep this community safe, I really appreciate everything that you and your officers do for this community. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Chief. Any other comments? Okay, we're moving on. Thank you. I'm going to tell you, this wouldn't be possible if we didn't have a dedicated, tirelessly working individual for this town every day, and that's our town manager, Jason McLaughlin. Our next item was added. You got to wait down.
I'm sorry, Emily.
Emily, you got to wait here.
I'm just sorry.
All right. So our next item was added, it's going to be a Veterans Affairs Committee of Honor. But before former officers will speak, here again, something from social media. I don't want to read it. A blog, he's going to address something. Here we are again with other commentary. This one says, and I'm just going to read the first paragraph, again, someone seeking public office. It appears our Veterans Affairs Committee is on a hiatus, and I've been asked how we can get it up and running again and why it went on break in the first place. A town like Hope Mills, with not only a high population of veterans, but also like the people, the service members, deserves a functioning Veterans Affairs Committee. So that's the segue.
Any other comments? Okay, we're moving on. Thank you. And I'm going to tell you, this wouldn't be possible if we didn't have a dedicated, tirelessly working individual for this town every day, and that's our town manager, Chanson McLaughlin. Our next item was added. You gotta wait down. Emily, you gotta wait your turn. All right, so our next item was added, it's going to be a Veterans Affairs Committee update. But before former Commissioner Willie Mitchell speaks, here again, something from social media. And I'm going to read it. A blog he's going to address something. Here we are again with other commentary. This one says, and I'm just going to read the first paragraph. Again, someone seeking public office. It appears our Veterans Affairs Committee is on a hiatus. And I've been asked how we can get it up and running again, and why it went on break in the first place. A town like Hope Mills, with not only a high population of veterans, but also like the duty service members, deserve a functioning Veterans Affairs Committee. So that's the segue again. Now, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Former Commissioners, Town Manager, Staff. When I saw the post there, and I read, and everybody know, that have worked for me know, that one thing I would leave in is just, this leading information, half-truth equals a whole lie. I'm going to say that again. Half-truth, this leading information, equals a whole lie. The Veterans Affairs Committee funded a decision about fifty thousand dollars. It did not, did not, I repeat, have an impact for them to make that decision. The narrative outlined, the sequence, this is what I wrote. I'm going to read it as I wrote it, but I'm going to try to cut through some of it, it's going to be too long. The narrative outlined, the sequence of events that clarified the roles of key organizations, the Hope Mills Veteran Affairs Committee, Cumberland County Veterans Council, and I was the president at the time, Veteran of Foreign Wars, Department of Transportation, Mr. Marston, Department of Recreation Director, regarding the use of fifty thousand dollars in grant funding earmarked for the Hope Mills Veteran Monument. And the key word, fifty thousand dollars, was earmarked for the veteran monument. And the purpose of this is to provide a clear understanding of it all. And in two thousand twenty-two, our state legislature officials awarded a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to the veteran, the Cumberland Veterans Council. With the understanding that fifty thousand dollars specifically was earmarked for Hope Mills to cover the movement of the veteran monument. At this point in time, I think, as they come out to a timeframe, Louis Open served as the chairman of the VAC, participating in an initial discussion about fifty thousand dollars. The fund was designated solely for the monument and could not be diverted for any other purpose. Shortly after these initial conversations, Holtman resigned as chairman of the HVAC. His resignation led to the cessation of meetings and a significant drop in committee discussions regarding the monument's future. During this period, I was serving as president of the CCDC, representing the Veterans Council and not the town of Hope Mills and the related matters. As I say, Hope Mills' resignation was, there was minimal or no dialogue about moving to monument. Nevertheless, VFW, the town of Hope Mills continued to collaborate on approaches of all veteran-related issues that had been customary for approximately two thousand ten to two thousand twenty-two, where I've served as both the chairman and vice chairman of the Hope Mills Veteran Affairs Committee. The VFW contained to look into trying to determine the feasibility and the cost of relocating or replacing monument. We learned that fifty thousand dollars was insufficient for such a project that moving to monument was not a viable option. A new one would have to be purchased. To explore possible support, we requested assistance from the Department of Transportation. When DOT briefed the town, they informed us that their revised construction plan would have minimal or no impact on the monument, meaning that the fifty thousand dollars allocation for the move was no longer needed for its original intent. Upon learning this, the CCDC treasurer and I held a conference call with the State Grant Office to explain the situation. We inquired whether the fund could be repurposed for another use and was told to grant strictly for the monument. We asked if we can, if we need to return the funds. The State Office suggested we consider other properties associated with the monument. Recognizing their urgency, therefore, and I did one to allocate the funds, I contacted Mr. Marston, the town park director, and I explained to him that Hope Mills need to identify a project related to the monument. And I cut some of this short, because when I called the marco, I said, listen, my job is to stop. I'm going to tell you right now, you're going to lose, you're going to lose the money, or you're going to lose it. And I'm going to give you a thirty-day warranty. That's exactly what I told him, he can verify it. Mr. Marston proposed construction of a parking lot adjacent to the monument, a concept that HVAC had discussed in previous years, additional veteran parking space which was most needed. We contacted the State Office again and received approval to approve the project. We did not make the decision. We had to contact the state to get their approval. At this time, Hope Mills was the only entity that had not used, allocated, and matter of fact, they was the only one that had not used all the money of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And everybody know, when you're working with a budget, major timeframe, it's hammer time. You got to get that money off the books. I attempted to discuss the situation with Ron Stalden, the HVAC chairman. He directed me to bring them out of the next HVAC meeting, which was noninvolvement, never had a form. I went there one time, two times, three times, and anybody that knows me, I don't do the deal with you no more than once, twice, and I leave you alone. I don't have any kind of time to waste. Due to lack of form, we ultimately made the decision that the parking lot was going to be the project that we're going to move, since we already had the state approval, we moved forward with it. Hope Mills Veteran Affairs Committee was not available to make this decision with us to help us talk about it. I don't waste time on this topic, I don't want to. And certainly, the fifty thousand grand earmarked for the monument was redirected for the purpose of that parking lot. So the lie we talked about, I was involved with Dog Park, that's a big lie. Me and Jim Marston, the president, and I'm saying, yeah, I'm back to commander of the VFW, you're supposed to. No, that was not. That money came to the CCDC, Cumberland County Veterans Council. And I tried again to engage, talk to me, I can tell you right away. Refuse to, when it falls within this, I'll follow that years. And that's where we at right now. And any other lies that's been told about it, HVAC, I'll tell you right now, is all half-truth and half-lies. Full, full lies.
Thank you, former Commissioner Willie Mitchell. Commissioner Schueller, who is the liaison for Veterans Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I need you, I need everyone to understand that you can't make decisions without a form. You can, if, if you don't have a form, and you have a new chair, well, you're supposed to vote in the chair, you're supposed to vote in all the positions. That's not my job, I'm the liaison. You're supposed to vote and renew your bylaws. We never had a form, never checked on the bylaws, never did the bylaws. We didn't have a secretary, so no minutes were ever taken. So, for two members to be upset, specifically one member, to be upset because the, the VAC was put on hiatus, what, what could I do? Again, it's, I'm just the liaison. And no minutes are taken. The last minutes we have from the VAC was when Jim Morris was the chair. Because of the negative atmosphere with the VAC, the VFW and the American Legion felt it was best, they disassociate with the VAC. And I, I'm a member of the VFW and I'm a member of the American Legion. They said that they would be happy to come back with different leadership, and I agree. So, I, I can't, I, I don't have power as making votes for that committee. But when no one wants to join because no one wants to do business with the lia, with the chair, I, I have to listen to them. Again, these are our citizens. These are our military members, and for someone to insinuate that I am anti-military, even though I served twenty years, did six deployments, five of them were in the combat zone, but I'm anti-military, even though I also run a military keepers club, but I'm, I'm anti-military. I don't care about our veterans, okay? But my experience and stuff that community says otherwise. But Mayor, I would like to see us, I have no problem bringing back the VAC. However, I think we have, need to have all the new applications done. Because I'm not going to, I'm not going to have a toxic, toxic atmosphere. I'm not going to have someone talk down to me. I'm not better than anyone. I'm a blue collar, okay? I grew up on welfare as a child. I joined the Army because we were poor. I didn't go into college until I retired from the Army. So I am definitely not better than anyone else. So, I would like to see the applications redone for anyone that wants to join the VAC, and we start from scratch.
And for clarification purposes, because both the American Legion and the VFW is inside this community, and Mayor, you can probably remember this, we made both those organizations members of VAC. They, because at first, when we had members, they were saying, well, you don't live in Hope Mills. But guess what? The organization is in Hope Mills, this is a veteran organization. And what everybody want to understand, we would have events. And everybody that was involved in the events was, guess what? Members of the VFW and the American Legion. The goal was to unify these organizations so we function as one, and we will function as one. And I'm telling you right now, the individuals say, I say, why come you not, what happened with the Hope Mills Veteran Affairs Committee? They said they hated the individuals that was there. They hated working on it, so they didn't want to make, didn't want to listen. They want to help make right decisions and stuff like that. You cannot function when you can't work together. It's got to be that way.
Thank you.
I was just being asked, Commissioner Schueller, should be able to make that, make that motion. I would like to say.
I'm going to redirect and say, you're going to make a motion to begin accepting applications to the Veterans Affairs Committee.
For, for an order, I do think that, for the record, we do even know that the chair that we're talking about, there is no budget for the VAC, because he didn't request a budget. I think this led to the disbandment. I think maybe given her authorization, or school authorization to form something like an ad hoc committee to act to study, get it redone, and then bring it back to the board, I think the idea is great to actually reset and take in the applications. But I think what I'm hearing is that relationship between the VFW, the American Legion, things need to be repaired, and then we bring it back, and we have the momentum. And I, I think my finance director is going to throw something at me when I say this. Maybe a budget, maybe to add the money back. The community wants this as a program.
I don't even think we need money right now. Because, I mean, and here's the thing, the VFW has been doing the Memorial Day ceremonies and the Veterans Day ceremonies without funding. They're the ones, they're the part that, you know, their responsibility, Veterans Memorial Part. They, you know, like, like Willie had said, when, when I was a member, we all wore multiple hats. We all wore American Legion, VFW. Not to say that you have to be American Legion or VFW to be on the VAC, but we were already doing the job to do it within the town of Hope Mills as the Hope Mills specific entity. It was just an extension of our, our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Schueller. The VAC at one time was a commission. Its long history, the monument that's out there, was totally raised by volunteers. The founders of that commission at that point in time was Jim and Jean Clark, pillars of this community for veterans. I served with them. I served with, with them on the committee as the commission. I also served with them as part of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Post Commander of Ten Six Thirty, District Eight. And of course, I'm a past state commander for VFW for the state of North Carolina. We don't need money. It's not about money. It's never been about money if you're a veteran. It's about brotherhood, and it's about representing and doing the right of our fellow, fellow, fellow veterans that are in the community. I get that. Because like Commissioner Schueller and former Commissioner Willie Mitchell, I served twenty-seven years in the Army. So yes, that motion that you've made, you want to start accepting applications? We have a second. Any more discussion, we're going to go on.
Want me to, I'll put in a motion for?
What would be your motion, start accepting applications?
My motion would be to start accepting applications for VAC to restart the VAC.
Okay, and that's the second.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Any further discussion, we'll wait on Mayor Ford to come back.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor?
I'm the veteran, I'll be your first applicant. You have to go see our town.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to tell a short story. So back in the day.
When I was in the military.
No, 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 actually, it was, while I was in the military, when I was stationed here at Fort Correa, I was on the, the, while it was the VFW, you were having meetings at Parks and Rec Building, because the VFW didn't have a building at that time. And so we had to attend our meetings there, I was on the firing squad. Jacob Roth, one of our, uh,
XPOW.
XPOW, he was on the firing squad, Leroy, pardon? Is that his last name? Yep, all of us were on the firing squad. There's the, we still have, I have the article saved where it was, Alyssa and you were standing, you were in your, your VFW garrison cap, and I'm on the firing squad, rendering honors, and I'm in the background with the firing squad, and he's there in the foreground of the photo. How was my short story? Was that to stand a little more? Yeah, I mean, I digress, but yes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries, we move on. Okay, Emily. As Emily comes up, notice on our screen that tonight, we do not have a little cart sitting here, and we don't have a laptop where you got a hand, move them up and down. We have a nice team sitting back here with Ashley and Rhonda, who's moving slides up and down on the screen.
I was trying to do the presentation this way, and you threw me off because it was on the screen. I was ready to go. Um, so first.
Oh, let me read it. We're under item number four, public hearing. Case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight. This is a continuation from August eighteen, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten. Existing rebar located in the northern margin of SR ten oh three Camden Road, said Camden Road having a variable whip public right of way. Said existing rebar being the southwest corner of track one, as shown on flat entitled survey for James Sessions and Brenda Lee Sessions Ross, as recorded in flat book seventy-three, page eighty-four of Cumberland County, North Carolina registry. This is a non-continuous annexation, that's under tab three. Now, now you got it.
The town of Hope Mills voted to accept petition for non-continuous annexation of July seventh, submitted by Norman Kaiser Reifel as the agent on behalf of Camden Road Development LLC with the offer. The property is seventy-nine, seventy-nine point five zero seven acres, plus or minus some size. Subject property is surrounded by residentially zoned properties within Cumberland County jurisdiction. Access to the property will most likely be from Camden Road. Board commissioners approved the resolution R two zero two five dash zero one nine on August fourth, twenty twenty-five, fixing the public hearing to today's meeting. Well, at the time, it was August eighteenth. Public hearing was opened on the eighteenth and then recessed until today's meeting, October sixth, due to applicant having an unforeseen circumstances occur. Staff is requesting upon approval of annexation authorization to proceed with initial zoning the property under R seven point five residential zoning district. Here is a viewing of the property. As you can see, the new I two ninety-five is north of it, and then you see Camden Road at the southern border of it. Hope County is the western. Pope County is the western side. And then you see Mariners Point subdivision is across the street. And here's an area, you can see that the property is currently undeveloped. Um, let's see, I don't know if my punch will work with this. So right now, there's not any water and sewer nearby that I know of. Um, for security reasons, we don't have full access to PWC's water and sewer lines. But if I understand it, it works. Nope. Um, I think Pear Tree West subdivision, I would want to say, has water and sewer. Uh, but otherwise, I don't believe. And I think some of Mariners Point is getting some water and sewer because of a project that PWC is working on. Um, to give you an idea of access to water and sewer nearby. So I believe that is, I'll be thinking, I invite you to.
Okay. Have a motion o, open in public hearing?
Motion open in public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Public hearings now open. Is anyone here that would like to speak in favor of case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight? Come forward. The mic is on, so just, just speak into the mic.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, it's good to see you tonight. My name is Jimmy Cosner, on one fifteen Broadford Avenue, Beverly Hills, Carolina. We're here representing Camden Land Developers LLC, um, on the development of Camden Land project. This project has been one of those things that has sat for quite a while due to DOT and two ninety-five. Um, originally Pear Tree that was shown on the map, that was shown was part of this overall piece of property and then two ninety-five kind of came right through the middle of it. When they did that, they pretty much cut off our access to water and sewer utilities. Um, we worked with DOT, or tried to anyway, to get water extended down Camden Road to serve this side of the project. And because of the interchange of Camden Road and two ninety-five, DOT was, was hesitant in letting us put a water line in there. Um, basically, at that point in time, their plans weren't fully designed and they couldn't tell us where we could put something and they wouldn't let us by right of way on properties that they'd already purchased until they got everything decided. So the project just sat. Um, the Pear Tree development was put in place and we actually put a stub, a water line stub under the road, um, with an eight inch line, um, with the intent, old standards back in the day, five hundred gallons per minute for car. Um, since then, there's been the talk of updating the fire flow code, with the building code, it can be a thousand gallons per minute. But right now, we're still working under the old code, a five hundred gallons per minute. Um, as part of our annexation petition, we put a condition on there that we could not guarantee that we could provide a thousand gallons per minute for the whole project. Um, parts of it initially, we can probably do that, but as the project develops and the progress phases, we can't guarantee that based on the model that we've built. Um, there are options to try to improve that, you can upsize the water lines, you can put in a booster pump. Um, the booster pump for PWC is, is expensive and somebody's got to maintain it over the duration. That's something that a homeowners association would really not be equipped to do. Um, trying to maintain something at that level to give us adequate power. Um, in regards to sewer, PWC is putting an outfall line in, um, it's coming up around the lake and then coming up through Mariners Point, crossing human the road. Will actually come along the side of the property and goes on under two ninety-five and serves places in order of there. Um, so we're, we're kind of waiting our timing to tie into that when it, when it comes along. But the big issue that we had at this point was we could not guarantee for the duration of the project that we could provide a thousand gallons per minute, um, as requested by the Commonwealth. And so we would be very frustrated with that aspect of it.
Okay, Commissioner Scherola?
A lot of that, and I was at plain review when this, when this was discussed. And where it's an issue is, is fire safety. Where if you only got five hundred, that's not going to be enough. And that was my concern and I said, I thought it was a bad idea, so personally, still, I think it's a bad idea. Um, this is an annexation, uh, essentially we don't have to annex it. Um, but my, my personal opinion that is we do not need that annexes because if it can't meet the fire, fire code regulation where it has to push a hun, a hundred, a thousand gallons. We got fire chief here? If it can't push a thousand gallons, it's unsafe. Because what happens if you got houses there and you're going to fire them? What are you gonna do, trickle it out of the sprinklers or got to trickle out of the fi, fire engine? That's human lives there. And I'd rather not come back on Hope Mills if we annex it then.
Okay, Commissioner Scherola, any other comments?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else here that's in favor of case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, here and, uh, Commissioner, I'm Harold Kidd, I've been kicking around here developing and building houses since seventy-six. And I met with, I met with your, your staff, my friend, we had plots. And, uh, that's the reason I asked, before we had a, bring a recording before y'all. Uh, and we met, I bought this land probably fifteen, eighteen years ago. And then we found out later on that, before the MAF Act was enacted, that, you know, that we didn't even think about, about the possibility of them bringing two ninety-five through there. We did, we did work and like Jimmy was saying, we put a hundred and twenty-nine houses on the, on the north side of Pear Tree West. So we had to put in a lift station there to pump the sewer, uh, the sewage back to the Pear Tree, uh, pump station. But as Jimmy had indicated to you, as of now, we can't, we can't, uh, we can get over five hundred, I believe it's, we would say we'd be here about seven hundred on some. And, and really, the way the affordable housing is nowadays, I mean, you know, uh, we're trying to keep the price down. And if we have to put more into it and have maintenance of it for a homeowners association, uh, can't handle it. I mean, you know, we just, it wouldn't, may not be feasible. Uh, now if it is approved, you can look at it from another way, from a, from a money standpoint. We have planned about a hundred, I think we can get about a hundred and eighty houses on that, on that piece of property that we're talking about. And if it's a fifty-three cent of a hundred, uh, the town would be getting close to three hundred thousand dollars after the Lord taxes a year from the time it starts, if, if not mapped this way. But I wanted to bring that to y'all. I'll ask you more, answer more questions.
We thank you, Harold, uh, you got a question, Commissioner Scherola? Yeah, we're gonna go, I'm gonna go through both of them first.
Well, one more thing I'd like to say, your staff, great.
They are.
I've dealt with Cumberland County, Oak County, Sampson County, and, uh, appreciate, appreciate the help.
They are, they are the greatest, they are. We hear that a lot.
I started down here when the cousin bought the, the McDonald's and they had a little strip shop right there and I built, built that first paper center and then, uh, finished towards the sidewalk. But I, uh, I was told, I was told when I was going to come to Hope Mills. Don't go to Hope Mills, they won't work with you, you know, this is twenty, twenty-five, thirty years ago. But I've never had anything but good service in Camden, with all three of you.
Thank you, both of you. Anybody else in favor of case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight? Is there anyone that is in opposition of case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight? Is there anyone that's in opposition of case A twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight? Now, if you have a question.
Question for the public hearing.
Second? Have a motion, have a second, any final discussion?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I have a question, I might call the fire chief, I think I did. Uh, as far as rules for, uh, fire code, if I'm not mistaken, does the town have any appendices of the fire code adopted?
They are adopted.
And is the appendices of an appendix fee for single family dwellers, thirty, correct me if I'm wrong, that a thirty-five hundred square feet requires a thousand G per minute for a duration of an hour?
There, I believe that is correct.
So if they're not going to meet the thousand G per minute requirement for a duration of an hour, you know, the town, town stands to take a hit on our, on the department's eyes, so ready for not having sufficient water. Um, so I, I don't know. That, that's the question of you, so can you enlighten us?
I was looking at the fire marshal, well, that is on the phone. And, uh, we've about the appendices, but it is a time of calendar.
For the duration of the night?
Yes.
So does the, can I ask? So does the developer or anybody have a, have a plan because they'll, they'll have to, they'll have to supply that thousand gallons a minute for, it's up to them to come up with a plan to do for approval as an AH. It's already in the jurisdiction to approve that property.
Correct.
But have they, have they done that to this?
Not that I know of. I guess the fire marshal says the plan and all that, but.
I can add a little bit to that as well. Um, this was a project that came before us pre-COVID and we said no for the same reason. There are two issues, one has a limit. Uh, you know, it's based on the, uh, the adjacent, uh, roadway things of nature. Because it's over, uh, units, they would have to put in secondary interest, but they can give body or sprinkler on the highway. There is no way to get to that thousand without doing something to pump more water into that system. And so if it's annexed in, I don't see a mechanism that the town can adopt that will get it through permitting if they don't get a thousand. And that's just what that, so we've had those conversations and when they came back, um, personally, I was looking for something that would have changed. Um, and I think it's the same proposal, so I'm, and I'm, I'm aware of the challenges to the developer, but that is a, a adopted code in our ordinance now for the time being.
Unless they can provide that minimum amount of gallons.
So let me, so let me ask you this, um, I feel you're running this, this is how they, they're not a being feared, but but i, if, if the manager's saying that they recommend the denial in the plan of view on my, my sheet here, I, I'm seeing it says kind of, the staff recommends approval of the request, but we can't, how can we approve it?
That I'm seeing too.
But I, I'm hearing that y'all denied it and Commissioner Scherola said it was denied in plan of view, but it, it's made it just enough for, for recommend approval, and I want, I tend to go to the staff to prove it, but, um, I, I don't know if we can. I, I don't know if the town needs to take that hit to our insurance rating, I don't know. You know, they're not coming, I don't have a problem with, you know, trying to work with them, but they need to come back with a plan. And you can hear a plan of how they're going to get the thousand gallons for the duration of hours or, you know, and if you're building a house and I don't know what size of the houses are, I, I don't know, I haven't seen it. Um, but if they're over thirty-five hundred square feet, that amount goes up even more. Now, if yes, if they go in there and put residential sprinkler systems in all those houses, you can reduce that amount. But if they're not willing to sprinkler the houses and, you know, do the exceptions in the code, then I, I don't see how we can, we can recommend for staff to recommend approval just request now.
So Chancellor can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are currently in the process of annexation. They've not officially submitted a site plan.
They were requesting annexa, they're requesting us to approve annexation. Once we approve the annexation, it comes out of court.
Correct, but they, but they can't get approval for a site plan unless they meet all the requirements. So the fire marshal would have.
They know now they can't get the board. So unless they come up with a plan and submitted a plan to the town, how they're going to get that board and how they're going to move that order there, how, we don't need to annex it at this point because if we annex it, then it's the town's fault. Right now, it's in the county. And they don't, they don't have to meet those requirements as they do when they come to us.
Well, if we annex it into the town and they don't meet the site plan approval at the time until they can get their situation dealt with, it would just sit there as a developed property, um, in the town. So I, obviously it's up to the board to decide what they want to do.
If they wanted to annex, oh, annex it, but as far as then breaking ground and putting houses on that property. I don't approve them of a site plan or anything, so they bring this board or our planning department.
I think the move, Rob, is from a zoning standpoint, there's no violation with what they're submitting in terms of annexation of property. Frankly, it's gonna be a dead piece of property until they get a thousand gallons. So what the mayor, they understand that, the mayor, they're very clear. And so I think what the Commissioner Wally is basically talking about is why go through the process of annexing in if they haven't sufficiently told us, they have a plan of view. So you, you can either annex it in, keep the budget until they meet that, or maybe come back using annexation if they come up with a better plan.
The annexation doesn't affect, they're still gonna have to submit a site plan, they comply with the Florida and comply with the order because they're not gonna build a property and put it through that. Annexation just, this is now part of the town and the compliance with the order is still a conflict.
Can we, can you say that, you said that, you're here, I guess we can ask a question. But they, but they understand where the company's from, they understand that even though we have annexes, they may be a dead piece of property and they have to deal with.
We can't do that, right? Like the, the, they met the requirements for the annexation, that's what they're asking for for the annexation, we can't.
You can, you can do that down to accept the annexation, but the, the, accepting the annexation only means that property.
It's now a time of limits.
With corporate limits. It doesn't give them any.
It doesn't automatically circumvent the, the issues that makes you have to meet. Makes you have to meet those fire code issues. And so ultimately, if you move forward tonight, that just typically makes it town property, it's out of town limits. But I think what, uh, Commissioner Wally is saying is, why go through that process if it's not to move forward? I think from the development side, they have, they would have to do something or it's never gonna be developed because they're not gonna fit together anymore.
I have a comment, uh, from Commissioner Legg and Commissioner Craver. And then perhaps after they make their questions, I'd like to hear from both of you. Give them, Commissioner Legg, your first.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kidd, would you need more time to work on this before you bring it in here?
Uh, Harold, come forward, both of you. I think probably this might be the right time to come forward.
The annexation petition that we've, specifically had in there, that we could not meet the fire flow as in, for this. Um, to put it in perspective, as I said earlier, we have an eight inch line, you know, I can't make that line any bigger. It's fitting prior to rebuilding that section of the road. So I am stuck with that line, it can only place so much water. Since the SPOC system, we're out there on the very edge of it. So I can't make up additional water for that project. Um, we've modeled it, we've gone through different scenarios of what we could do. But I put some lots on the ground and need a thousand, yes. And I put all the lots on the ground and need a thousand. But I put some lots on the ground and need a thousand, yes. And I put all the lots on the ground and need a thousand, no, can't be far. So we wanted to be very upfront when we made this petition. You know, Carolyn and I debated, are we here in favor or opposed? Well, we're kind of in the middle. Um, you know, we love Hope Mills, we like to be part of Hope Mills, but at the same time, as Commissioner Marley indicated, we know we can't meet your requirements as it is. I can meet the county requirements. So twenty-eight, he's got the best still in the bag, and so they get everybody in place, we're voting on it. It may be next year, it may be the year after, we don't know. Um, but we can go ahead and get started with the county and move along and not have to worry about that. It was, or there are options, yes, there are options that you can look at. One is doing a booster pump, the other one is red sizing the lines. Problem of doing both of those are maintenance and cost. If I upsize the lines, I'm going to have water that's going to have to be blown off because it gets stale. If you leave water in the line like that at the end of the system, over time, it goes bad. Only rate, you can, you've got to keep flushes to keep it clean. So you have to put an automatic flusher on the end of the line. So we might as well take her up water, because the town of Hope Mills is going to take her up there. Again, in association, it's just not equipped to do that. Same thing with booster pump. We put booster pump in, we can help with the fireplace situations, but that's not over time, that can be used in the maintenance, and use maintaining that. Um, but HOA is not going to be equipped to do that. There's nobody in the HOA that's going to be out there or know how to go out there and fix that thing if it's open. If it goes down and you have a fire, what's the town going to do? So we, we're kind of in the pondering, you know, where are we? We're in the middle. We want to be up front, we want to tell you what the conditions are and look around again. And we'll make you very much aware of that.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Legg, go ahead. Do you have your answer? Commissioner Craver, turn that, and then Commissioner Swallow.
No, Harold. Would you be, I mean, would you be satisfied if we just annexed you to not amend it, is what you're here for, to ask brand extension? And then that would give you more time to try to figure out the thousand gallons?
Well, I would, I would rather y'all just, and the reason I'm always here, when we, Jimmy, as I, like he said, we talk alone now, and we're saying we want to pencil to it and so forth. And, uh, I would, I would ask y'all to either approve it or deny it.
The town, we could make changes. I meant we could approve it.
You could.
I, I think it's important to understand that the annexation of the department can be ordered between annexation. So we have to reset through the process of the town officials in order for us to proceed with our statements. As part of that, again, that's why we're going to do that, coming up, that we're happy to do it, but we have a potential issue, and we don't know if anybody can get started, you were concerned about down the road.
And we can't put it here, you know, there's no way to make, uh, build a house, build a fire, and just move it. Otherwise, you know, we just wouldn't want to bother you. So I'm just respectfully ask y'all to either approve it or deny it.
Thank you, Harold. Commissioner Craver, go ahead. Go ahead, um, Commissioner Swallow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm not putting people's lives, um, no. Again, it's town ordinance, it's fire code. Um, to approve it is to, because we'll, they'll, what we have, and they try to, um, get a policy change or something to, to meet the code, no. Um, they said they're not going to change it, they're not going to pay for it, the HOA is not going to pay for it, so Hope Mills will pay for it.
Exactly.
It would be, no, no contest. Um, uh, taxpayers would have to pay for this? Um, so a developer can make money off of people's lives? No, that's not going to apply by me. And I told you that in plan review. And P W C is also there in plan review. They said that you're not going to get that thousand gallons unless you install that equipment. You don't want to do it because you would lose money. So have a fallback on citizens for your development, for you to make money, I have a problem with that. So I say no.
Okay, Commissioner Marley, do you have anything else?
No, I, I just, um.
You need to close the public hearing.
Good.
And then take action. We have a close. No, we, we had a motion, we had a second, we had a vote. We have a close.
We had a discussion.
You had a motion and a second.
So do I have a motion to close, public hearing? Second. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, public hearing is now closed. Now we can take some action. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
So, so that, I, I don't want to seem like I'm going back and forth, but I, I respect you. Um, but I have no problem with annexing that property into the town. Because that's going to hit the town tax base, um, that alleviates eventually creating another, another hole, um, later on down the road. If, if, if y'all want to get into town, I don't mind annexing. My thing is, I'm trying to help you. Because you have a piece of property, you're going to be paying taxes to the town, which I, I appreciate. Um, but you're not going to be, but you're not going to be able to do anything with the property. And I, and I, and I, and I know how we got to this point. Um, I mean, you can meet the standards of the county, um, probably and do what you need to do. But in order to get water from P W C, you have to petition to be annexed into the New Smith Institute, which has been updated. I understand all that happens. You cannot meet our requirements. So if you still want to annex, I don't mind annexing it, and I'm kind of wrong by annexing it because it would have been created and done at home later, uh, later on down the road, but just understand that it may. Now, you can put booster pumps out there, you can increase the, uh, pressure, you can put the, once again, it's not the town's responsibility to maintain it. Um, if this is on the back of the Bedford Home Mortgage Association, it, it's not the town's responsibility to do that. It's not the town's responsibility to, uh, pull maintenance on wells or anything else that you might be in out here to get the extra water flowing as you need. So, um, I appreciate the clarification earlier, Dr. Craver, and we're just talking about the, I remember just talking about the annexation fees that were probably put in the car for the order, but, uh, you mentioned water flow, and that triggered in my mind, you know, hey, hold on a minute. Um, so I just want you to know, I'm, I'm for annexing, and if you want to annex, but just know that, that y'all understand that where you may be at.
Again, that's why we put on there, the condition. We have a condition for the annexation.
Would someone, excuse me, would someone read, uh, briefly?
Time out, time out, because that's what I'm going to jump in. That condition asks us to maintain, and that is a hard no. We don't even own the system. We don't have the authority to actually, um, maintain the water system. So that's why I want to make sure, if you look at that recommendation plan review, it says recommendation of approval, but the fire department says must be fire code. And I'm not trying to throw water on this thing, figures it, we're talking about five. This is the same request we got five years ago. The answer was no then. So that condition is being brought up, and you accept it. You're saying the town is going to meet the gap. Am I not, is, is, am I correct? You're asking the town to meet the gap between eight fifty and a thousand. And as manager, I'm telling you, that's a hard no in terms of my recommendation. Um, B, we're in the compliance business, compliance with our codes. Whatever the issues are that creates challenges to get beyond those codes is an actual challenge for the developer's side, not from the town's side. Because the last thing you guys want to deal with is some public, uh, crisis that happened because when someone's house burned down, who approved it? The town did. And so that's what I'm, I'm, I'm talking about in terms of regardless of what that decision is, I will not accept any condition, but because we don't have the ability to actually comply with that, I guess.
Would you be amenable to removing your condition?
Mr. Mayor, at this point, um.
This is a, this is a rock and hard place.
No, it's not.
I mean, it really is.
No, it's not.
This is, this really is, it is, Harold. This is a true rock and hard place. Go ahead.
I want to make a motion to deny the acceptance of ordinance, uh, annexation ordinance A twenty-five zero zero.
I have a motion to deny case out on A twenty twenty-five, tax zero zero eight. We have a second to deny.
My second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussions to deny? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? All in favor to deny, that's four, both oppose. One. The motion to deny passes four to one. We thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to bring your attention to the, um, concept agenda. You'll need to amend it to remove the ordinance that, um, corresponded with that, um, with that item. So I just wanted to point that out before we get there. It is, uh, yeah, it's E.
Oh, there you go. And we'll do that when we get to the Senate House. We'll remove it, we'll remove it at that time. Next item is, uh, B, it's Z N G dash zero one one dash two five tax amendment to the town of Hope Mills subdivision ordinance to update and amend various sections throughout as needed under tab four. Emily, you stay with us.
So this is referencing back to a meeting we had last year where I was more or less given permission to move forward with helping to update, make several updates throughout the subdivision ordinance. And so here we are with the finalization of it. More or less, uh, I'm just going to do a summary of what we went over. With the adoption of one sixty D in North Carolina statutes, updates were necessary to align the changes to town ordinances. And, um, over the past five years, Hope Mills has experienced significant growth that continues to advance. Updates to ordinance has helped to address future infrastructure needs and promote efficient land use, including open spaces, parks, and relatively deep sidewalks to help create walkable neighborhoods. So summary of, of updates and amendments, I sat down with and spoke with several of the departments to ensure information is accurate, including Chief Building Inspector, Public Works Director, Parks and Recreation Director, and Fire Marshal. Open space requirements have been updated, inspiration came from the Willington ordinances. Updates were made to several depositions, updates for mobile home replacement have been added to ensure quality replacements are done in future. Um, that was a very long conversation with the Chief Building Inspector, Mr. Twain. Updates were made to align our public works requirements, along with references to the Standards and Specifications Manual to ensure that sidewalk and street requirements are accurately reflected within subdivision ordinance. A new exception has been added regarding trash pickup from wealthy family developments, consisting of fewer units, which shall require the use of dumpster sites and hold the developer slash H O A responsible for the trash removal. Changes were incorporated that were approved in the recent past, and the town worked with Mr. Tom Boyd in updating several areas in subdivision ordinance, um, mentioning burns and walking trails being utilized for open spaces. While planning department works very well and closely with Compton County Planning and Hope Mills inspections, updates were made throughout the ordinance, such as references to approval by Compton County Planning Director, and mentions of Chief Building Inspector have been changed to Planning Director, and the requirement to go through the county has been approved. That does not mean we removed the requirement for the planning board, though. We still do have to go through the planning board for approval. Um, and that's more or less it. It was a lot of changing over from the terms of approval by the Chief Building Inspector and incorporating, uh, a lot of different ordinances that have been approved over the years and not added into the document. So once everything has been updated, it'll already be under one document instead of two pieces here and there.
Okay. This is public hearing?
Voted out for public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of Z N G dash zero one one dash two five tax amendments? Does anyone here like to speak in favor of Z N G dash zero one one dash two five tax amendment? Is there anyone here that would like to oppose Z N G dash zero one one dash two five tax amendment? Anyone here in opposition of Z N G dash zero one one dash two five tax amendment?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Seeing none opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do we have an action?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, we adopt the text of units to the subdivision ordinance as outlined in the attached document.
We have a, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just give you a quick note, um, similarly to the updates on the ordinance, for now, it'll show like the redlined copy on the website until I have the completed document available to post on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item five, public comments. As I call your name, you'll come forward, uh, list your name and address as I require, and time limits are three minutes. The only thing that I ask for is to be respectful during the three minutes. The board may, may, the, the total comment will be, will be three minutes. And at the change of discretion of board, speakers should avoid repetition. And if there's any groups, which I don't think there are, although the board is interested in hearing your concerns, speakers should not expect board action, responsive deliberation on subject matter brought up during public comment session. First one is Erika Burns.
Erica.
Erica, all right. I'm not that great with names.
It's all right.
I try them. Yep.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Erica Burns, my address is three five two nine East, and I'm from St. Louis, North Carolina. I serve as the first vice chair of the Common County Democrat Party. I am here tonight just to announce the forum on Saturday. Um, Chancellor tried to take my shine, but that's all right.
No.
So the Hope Mills Town Forum will be on Saturday, October the eleventh, from eleven A M. until one P M. at the Hope Mills Rec Center. We are hosting the, uh, forum, but it is a nonpartisan, impartial format for the forum. The questions can be submitted ahead of time via a job form that is listed on the flyer that has been posted, I believe, on the social media page, also on your website. That job form, um, questions submitted there come straight to me. Um, those questions are vetted. Any question that is submitted that is a personal attack on any individual will be removed. Those questions will not be asked by our moderator, well, your experienced moderator, who will join us on Saturday. For any questions, comments, suggestions, concerns, they can come to contact myself or our Chair Derrick Montgomery, and we can answer that, and they can, this is going to be a very nonmarshall, um, nonpartisan, impartial format, uh, candid forum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you for hosting the forum Saturday. Our next, our next speaker will be Irene.
No, um, Commissioner Scherola already covered the elections, the voting.
Okay. Former Commissioner Ridley Mitchell.
Actually, I was going to, Ridley Mitchell, four zero five.
Actually, I was going to talk to Ridley Mitchell, four zero five six, Green Village Drive, in Hope Mills. I was going to talk about H-Tech, I'm throwing it out. Actually, I want to take this time to say thank you so very much, Gordon and Tom Manager. Right, long overdue. I wrote my nasty gram, my nasty email about two months ago. But I just want to take this time to say this, citizens, this going to the polls, the votes, progress has been made, and we're continuing progress. We have not had losses, what, more than three years now? It's three years, I think, we have not had losses since I've been on. Our police department, police chief, thank you so very much. When you came to me about three years ago, you said, Commissioner Mitchell, give me time. And your work, your actions have proven to show in the results and quality police force that we now have. Thank you. Our Parkinson Rigs Director, thank you. All the Parkinson grants, the funds that y'all went out and secured for our, our, our town, trust me, that money has saved the taxpayers many a dollars. And all the other departments that have done the job that y'all continue to do, you're doing an amazing job. I'm telling you right now, I don't care what nobody say, this town is making progress. Things are getting done. And I can tell you, when you talk to the people, you say, hey, put your name. We're getting there. It wasn't, it's not, it's not gonna happen overnight. It takes time. It takes time, everyone. But we cannot do it if we keep going out destroying and trying to check each other down. Nothing gets done that way. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the people, and most of all, it's not good for our tax base. It's really not. We have to stay focused, we have to stay positive, and ask ourselves one question. What do we want Hope Mills to look like five years from now, ten years from now, fifteen years from now? What is our vision for Hope Mills? Well, we tired of Hope Mills growing. We tired of this, we tired of that. Well, guess what? Get involved in your community. There's a lot of ways you can get involved. All these communities out here, they need you. The schools need you. I have a community right now, just stepped down on the Kewon's Club. We cannot get members, but it's all about the kids. If we don't begin to focus on our kids, everybody, we are going to suffer tremendously in this community because we are aging. And by the way, did y'all know the fastest growing homeless population right now in this nation? Is people over the age of sixty-five plus. They are aging. They are on fixed incomes. Those of us that have good money that's coming in, think about the ones that don't have that. They are one paycheck to one fire from being homeless because they cannot afford insurance, they not, cannot afford the rent increase, and most of all, they cannot afford the inflation and cost living does not keep pace of what is going on now. We have to work as community as one. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Coach Mo?
Maybe for my time first, I'd just give a couple of thank yous. Chief Kane, thank you very much for your boys coming out and having us scrimmage against us. Uh, I just would appreciate it next Sunday and tackle the heck out of my boys. Uh, we had a great public, uh, community relations event. Chief Donald, you guys came to the end of the occasion, and they had a very serious one. So we get, you know, we know they're, they're too afraid to come play with us. We got you. So, uh, I want to thank the fire chief for that and bringing out, uh, his guys and letting us, uh, scrimmage against them. Alright, so, uh, I'm here, I know I'm talking a lot about Parkinson Rigs. Yeah, it's not about that. Today, we're going to talk about toxic leadership. Um, I think that it's absolutely disgusting that we have such a great community and that's moving so far ahead, that's moving so much. I mean, you just take something small, let's just take a look at their backs. They went from a simple brewery to a different venue. They were very family oriented business. Now they have an ex commercial property. You know, and they're growing really, really fast, minority owned business. The UPS pack ship right next to the, uh, movie theater, minority owned business. And they're hustling and blessing. And they're a big sponsor of all my teams. So I really appreciate that. This community is flourishing and it is, back home, exploding in minorities. They're coming regardless of being likely or not. And they're multiplying, and we got big bill bowls. It's just coming from the Turkish, Persian, Sicilian, American, so from the surface. Not only are we coming with our big bill bowls, but it's not gonna stop. We're gonna buy property, we're gonna buy commercial space, we're going to take this town over at some point, or it's gonna be a bounce. And you know what? That's okay, because this is what America's about. It's about progression. It is disgusting that we have such a great board, minus one, such great manager, amazing department head, all the way from wall to wall, right there, the subject matter experts and, and, and standard bearers of their profession. We've got a EMS director, a veteran, semi-pro, uh, athlete. How great, when did you box and play semi-pro hockey? I could be wrong, what, twenty-something year veteran? Two department heads out of local college, a legend in the Parkinson Rigs community and support community here. Jerry, thank you for everything down for the Parkinson Rigs community, but... And then to have one bad apple just contaminate the public pool of how Hope Mills is being, it's horrible. And then to attack a hybrid vision with police, you could reduce, uh, crime by five percent. Do you understand how much that is? That's ridiculous. As adults, as Americans, we should be holding ourselves to higher standards. And it's not happening. So come November, I bet you that's some, some of the people in that seat. And all fifty-five members of my wrestling team's parents are going to enjoy that.
Thank you very much, Coach Mo, Mr. Ron. Good to see you, sir. Haven't seen you in a little bit.
I haven't, fishing.
Hope you're well. Fishing, guess you got any fishing?
Hell yeah.
So, Ron, City Act forty-three six four Downing Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina. So I'm gonna talk about the gate at the golf course. You and I have talked directly about this. And, uh, because it's become a perfect example of waste, mismanagement, and fraud. The sign clearly says for walking trails open from dawn to dusk. Yet time and time again, the gate is locked, especially on the weekends. Generally, it doesn't matter. Last night, uh, Sunday night, it was open at one o'clock in the morning. Came back this morning, I knew it was gonna be unlocked, because whoever's doing it doesn't do their job and they're paying for it. Taxpayers are paying, uh, for access without getting. Someone is being paid to lock and unlock that gate, and it's not being done. This is not just poor management, that's fraud. And what's worse, the town leadership continues to turn a blind eye to it. I've talked to you about this. And let's be honest, the gate does not prevent a single thing. The park is wide open from every angle. Your prior military, your prior military, you understand what your perimeter is. It does not, uh... The park's wide open from every angle. It didn't stop the man from hiding in the bushes. Are you aware of this? Are you aware of this? We had a guy hiding in the bushes. I don't want to go past my time, but I will give you a short recap of it. I walk that trail, I walk that park every day. A police, a former police officer from Lake County is a superintendent out there or seeing the sewer system going in there. You seen the guy in the bushes after I passed him. He was a police officer when, uh, dude was raping ships at the park. So I walk it every day at that back end, and a young female walks it every day at that back end. He called the police, there was a red flag. There was a cruiser out there in the wood line, and there was also a police car out there. It also didn't stop the abandoned car that sat out there for thirty days. I had to contact you, and you took care of it at the end. And it also didn't stop the guy from some, some stealing ten thousand dollars of equipment out of the Conex out there. It didn't stop that either. The only rea, uh, let's go here. So I have to ask, exactly what is this gate protecting? What is it protecting? It's not protecting anything. It's ninety-nine acres with a gate that does absolutely nothing. Uh, because we're not, uh, so I have to ask, what is the gate protecting? Because it's not protecting the people, it's not protecting property, and it's not protecting the taxpayers. It's protecting bad decisions and poor leadership. This isn't about the gate anymore, it's about accountability. It's about honesty. If we can't manage something this small as a gate, how can anyone trust the county to manage anything larger? We see it every day, we're growing, we're growing, we're growing, can't control the gate, what else can it control? Here's a simple truth, if you can't maintain posted hours, if you can't manage the gate properly, then take it down. Take it down. It doesn't do anything. Stop wasting manpower, stop wasting taxpayer dollars, and stop misleading the public. Because right now, we're paying for a service that hap, is happening. This is, that's not just wrong, it's dishonest, and it's fraud. And my property taxes doubled. I expect excellence at all times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Commissioner's role?
Did you contact anyone from staff?
About what?
The gate.
Yes, I had a discussion with him. Yes.
Uh, Ron, my husband and I own that golf course. We never put a gate up anywhere. And we didn't have any vandalism, maybe a, a flag out of the, uh, off the green.
In Colorado.
You told me, uh, what, and, uh, maybe that. But other than that, we never had any vandalism out there on that golf course. We never put a gate up.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Braver. Thank you, Ron. Can we, can we make a decision about the gate? Lamarcus, can we make a decision about the gate here?
I thought it sounded like it began with, I was made for, I was made for the deal because of steamy winds in the night, so, you know, people in the park. I'd be glad to be there.
Well, the gate's there, just, just, just keep it unlocked.
No, just, just... I would have Lamarcus, not even the first thing to warn. The whole...
Can you ask me about another gate? That one at Heritage Park is never locked. It's open day and night from when I sleep. Why didn't you take that one up and then you'd have to...
That's the first I've heard of that one.
The little part that you're being open?
Well, we'll, we'll look at the one at Heritage Park. I, I, I really don't want to encourage, the one at Heritage Park is a little bit more, you know, a little bit more, uh, go into...
Because there is no access, you can drive around the gate at the golf course. You can't get in Heritage Park now.
The gate is not locked. It's open in the morning, it's open all night long.
Is it open now?
Well, I don't know.
I, I, I'll look into that, because if the gate's not being closed, they have a park attendant that's also opening and closing the gates, meaning somebody's not doing their job. So I, I'll look into that also.
Anyway, that's... You'd have to gauge it somewhere else that they're needed, but, uh, but I hate questions like that. Why don't we have a gate when I'm locked?
I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah, and I've, and I've never seen this, I've never seen a car down there at night. And I go all the time, just close the night, out. And I've never seen a car down here, so I don't know that there's people, if he found any vandalism or anything.
I, I, I have seen evidence of, uh, homeless and, 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 you know, people in the wooded areas, so...
Yeah, I think they are, in fact, that it's woods and homeless.
It, it's just an added protection, just that, I mean, it might not be the cars down there at, you know, now, but something tells me if you don't put a gate there, it, it's gonna begin to be a problem. You're gonna begin to have people sleeping in the car. But I, I, I'll look into the gate not being closed, but that's really part of what the park attendants are charged for.
Okay, Lamarcus, so you're looking at one and remove the other?
Yep.
You got it. Moving on. Moving on. Uh, our last speaker for tonight on this list is Deanna. Sure? Alright, anybody else want to speak? Sir, go on. I don't know your name, but...
Good evening, I'm Jonathan, I'm working here in Hope Mills, it's nineteen seventy-eight, fifty-five nineteen Pedestrian. I'd like to say I appreciate your transparency and staff tonight, the challenges you had with a request for records and state all of yours, and then the fictitious social media posts. Um, I'd also like to, I was kind of inspired or, or disprimented at the reference with, um, another employee making reference to toxic leadership. Um, it's very evident we have a toxic member among us. Um, and it was set in, it was actually in third, uh, for peers. Um, I hope that activity did not happen and you did not say what you did, wanted to outcry the community responded to the allegations. You were very adamant, if I never said that, I was watching your body language. I'm not a physics expert, but I do know body language pretty well. But if there's any credence or any factual information on that, I would really request that you just resign and not waste getting Hope Mills, I know it's a lot of your efforts, and not put a black eye on this. We're doing, we're all working on that.
Sir, I am not guilty of that. I am not guilty of that.
I hope you're not.
I'm not.
Your peers do not have faith in you. Your peers do not have faith in you.
No, I'm sorry that the dog is their problem, but they have wanted me...
I think it's your problem.
They wanted me off of this board, they have called me an old white woman. I have been told that I'm too old to serve on the board. Now, I shouldn't have to take that, and I never speak to them. I am not guilty of this, and I'm going to take you doing this.
Okay, okay, that's, that's far enough. I think we're over the, over the line of public comments. Thank you very much, sir. Moving on, consent agenda's next. Under item six, we need to remove item E. Do I have a motion and a second to remove item E? Do I have a motion, have a second?
Second.
On favor? Item E is, when, should you raise your hand? No? To remove item E. Oh, okay. Alright. Unanimous, item E is moved. Now do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Much you feel approved, much you feel approved, um, A, B, C, and D, they are consent.
Second?
Second.
On favor? Seeing none opposed, items A, B, C, and D are approved on the consent agenda. That is the end of the consent agenda. We move on to item seven, which is the discussion, legal review of code of ordinances by multi-code. There's no attachment. Who's got that? I have, oh, actually I have one.
Oh, good evening, Mayor and board commissioners. We just wanted to bring this before you again. This, um, item isn't looking for any approval tonight, but you may recall that we included it in our priority items at the, uh, onset of the year during, uh, one of our priority, um, budget meetings. And so, uh, a few of you have actually brought up in various meetings how sometimes staff may bring text amendments, um, before you for approval, and that it conflicts with the code of ordinances that's online. So what this request would include is to have a legal review and a subsequent supplement to go along with that. And it runs around ten to twelve thousand dollars. So we requested it this past, um, uh, budget cycle, and it didn't make the cut. So we just wanted to put it before you again, not necessarily requesting the funding at this time, but just to let you know that this is something that staff cares strongly about, um, and that we are looking to do in the next, um, budget cycle.
So actually, this is something, I remember the request at budget workshops. Uh, was it ten thousand?
It was ten thousand at that time, but these costs are ever changing. So that's why I kind of looked it a little bit between ten and twelve thousand, because I'm just anticipating that it would probably go up by the time the next budget cycle comes around.
Okay, so we're looking at next year's budget, right?
Ideally, it's, unless you approve it now, but we aren't actually requesting, um, approval right now. Just kind of trying to get that included next year.
Okay, well, I, I, let me, let's revisit it in January. Drew, let's revisit it in January.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Put it as a priority for next year's budget.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, let's just see what the revenues look like in January. We may be able to do something there. Okay, any other discussion? Alright. Okay, whole business, none, new business. Under item A, consideration approval of budget amendment number six for the police department in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, tab ten.
May I make a motion to approve budget amendment number six for the police department in the amount of twenty-eight, seven, seventy-five?
We have a second? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Chief talked about this earlier on one of his slides. All in favor? Seeing none opposed? Motion's approved. Item B, consideration approval of budget amendment number seven for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of 51,300 dollars, tab 11.
Mayor, I'll make that motion as well, that we approve the budget amendment number seven for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of 51,300.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Item C, nomination and reappointment of Denise Gaskins to the Board of Adjustment with a term to expire February 2028, and that's under tab 12.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we reappoint Denise Gaskins to the, um, Board of Adjustment with a term to expire February 2028.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Uh, item D, the last item under new business, consideration of approval of contract with attorney Mac McCarthy for a personnel investigation, no with that. Dan will have it.
Uh, as you may recall, we received a handful of complaints from employees and a great deal of personnel matters, I can't discuss the substance of those in another session, but, um, the board, uh, asked for me to bring a proposed contract for a, a personnel investigation. Uh, contacted the leading municipalities to get, um, some suggestions for someone to do the investigation. We got the name of Mac McCarthy, who is a, uh, very respected, very experienced, uh, longstanding municipal attorney in the state of North Carolina. Um, and I will read out the email that he sent, uh, which, if the board agrees with the terms, will serve as sort of the, uh, the contracts that he will be doing work under. Um, this is addressed to Mayor, Board Commissioners, Hope Mills, North Carolina. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to provide legal services to the town of Hope Mills regarding an internal investigation of allegations of a hostile work environment. The purpose of this email is to confirm the terms of the engagement. The client for purposes of this engagement is the town of Hope Mills and less agreed, agreed in writing, I am not representing any other entity or individual related to the client, such as individual elected or appointed officials, subordinate boards or commissions, employees, or other individuals associated with the client. Primary scope of the representation is conduct a fact-finding investigation and deliver a report to you under terms. I will not take on other assignments without the request and approval of the board of commissioners to turn out. Any additional matters or assignments will be dealt at the same rate as the initial scope of the engagement. The scope of this engagement does not include giving any advice regarding litigation, tax, or legal implications of the fines. Now, primary contacts during this engagement will be you and attorney Dan Herzog, unless directed otherwise. Our rate to the town of Hope Mills for the services under this engagement will be 450 dollars an hour for the duration of the matter. I will charge for travel and other related expenses as necessary to carry out the representation. This email constitutes the entire agreement from the town of Hope Mills and the Department of Law, P L L C, as it relates to this matter. No retainer is required and I will not accept any client funds to be held in trust. All fees and expenses will be invoiced on a monthly statement emailed to you and attorney Herzog, and the town agrees to pay the invoiced amount within 30 days. If the town agrees with these terms, please have an appropriate official respond to this email and attach a pre- audit statement. If the town agrees, I can begin the investigation on Tuesday morning, October 7th. Thank you, Matt and Carter. So that's the terms of the contract, um, based on some prior discussions today, I followed up with him. Um, the only, uh, additional related expenses that he thought might come in play with mileage for his travels to the town, um, and you cannot anticipate any other expenses, if you want to, however you rate on that. Um, and we have defined the scope of the investigation to the, uh, grievances received from town officials.
And those griev, and those grievances allege a hostile work environment.
In, in general terms, and again, I can't discuss the specifics of those because it's personal.
I would like to say that we take grievances of our town employees seriously, as you can well tell, because this is not going to be a cheap investigation, it's going to be 450 dollars per hour to look into these grievances alleging a hostile work environment. Plus travel. And he is willing to begin this investigation, uh, interview tomorrow morning. And probably will be working with, uh, our HR director, Ian Baruch, to set up those appointments.
Um, I've coordinated with the town manager, uh, which I discussed earlier, I believe we have a, if the board agrees and would proceed, uh, we have a scheduled interview used, I think he's thinking of probably one day in the town and possibly a call with that. So it should not be an extended investigation, the idea is to, uh, find the facts, talk to everyone, and, um, not grab this out and have a.
Okay. Before, um, I call for a motion, uh, in a second, is there any discussion? Board members? My mayor pro temp?
I just want to make a motion, but I just.
Okay.
Just wanted to be, for transparency and clarification purposes, we're not using someone that had worked with the town before. Our directive was to find someone that was never known, never worked with the town at any point, and that's what we did.
Yep, this attorney, uh, has not conducted any investigation at all in the history of the town, so it's totally extraordinary. Okay? If not, do we have a motion? Have a second?
Oh, I did make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we insert, that we approve a contract with Mac McCarthy for a personnel investigation.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Final discussion? Board members? Final discussion?
I'm going to say, uh, if it doesn't work out, I'm looking for work. Or if it goes down.
You know what they say, you get what you pay for.
Uh, yeah.
Yep. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's four. Those opposed? Are you in favor?
No, I'm opposed.
You are opposed, okay. So the motion will carry.
If we need to strand that.
Four to one. The motion will carry four to one. Alright, that's it for new business. I'm going to, because of the, uh, time of the night, I'm going to ask the board if we can move item 10, which is committee liaison update, to October 20th, uh, and we can go ahead, and we, we have removed item 11, which is the club session. The reminders were at the bottom of the agenda, we'll be back again on the 20th. We'll be on our next level of board meeting, and if there's none, any other comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned tonight, thank you very much.